Good afternoon, and welcome to the public hearing on flow control. It's Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, and it's four, almost 15:00 in the evening and afternoon. And I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Jerry Edwards. We have County Manager Romero Chavez here in the boardroom, and Amy Davis, the Clerk of the Board, and Megan Porter, our PIO. I also see a host of folks on Zoom, the Public Works Director Jennifer Walker, Rick Peters, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, and a host of other folks that may weigh in as we move along. The purpose of this hearing is to accept and consider testimony on the proposed flow control ordinance related to solid waste management and handling. This is a virtual public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in by Zoom, phone, email comment, or mailed comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select announcements of public hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Staff Karen Wies, the Interim Solid Waste Division Manager, will provide information on this topic. Assuming those on Zoom or in the boardroom wish to testify, we will call on you. And you will have three minutes with which to testify. Amy Davis, the Clerk of the Board, will manage the time inside here. And if you can't see the timer, we will let you know when your time has expired. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called, please state your name and address for the record. This public hearing is now open. Karen Wies will now present background information on the proposal, any written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board. Karen?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you. Karen Wies, Interim Solid Waste Manager for Public Works Department. The Public Works Solid Waste Division is requesting the Board of County Commissioners consider the proposed flow control ordinance relating to solid waste management and handling in Thurston County. I'd like to take a minute to introduce the team that worked on development of the proposed flow control ordinance, some of the faces who you see here on the virtual meeting. So Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director, her expert guidance and leadership led us through this process. You mentioned Rick Peters, the Thurston County Senior Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. Steve DeGiulio is with us. He's the Principal at Foster Garvey, and he's the premier expert on solid waste issues in the state. And you also have Wendy Mifflin, who's a Senior Solid Waste Planner with HDR Incorporated Consultants, and she has over 30 years of solid waste experience. So I'd like to just welcome them to provide additional or clarifying information during this presentation as I go through this. So for background, while counties in this state do not regulate solid waste collection, they do regulate disposal. And under RCW 3658040, counties may designate solid waste disposal sites as the exclusive sites for receiving solid waste collected in unincorporated county areas. Counties enforce these exclusive designations through local regulations, which are commonly referred to as flow control ordinances. Cities, through participation in inter-local agreements with the county, may also direct their collected waste to the county-owned disposal facilities. Flow control is not new to our county, but is currently managed primarily through a contractual arrangement with our service provider for municipal solid waste, which is referred to as MSW, Transport and Disposal Services. This contractual arrangement will expire, and when it does, MSW flow control, as governed by the contract, will cease. Therefore, an alternate comprehensive mechanism for flow control is critical to have in place as we prepare to release a request for proposals for our solid waste operations, maintenance, transport, and disposal services in early 2021. This will ensure the receipt of contract proposals that are most cost beneficial for the county. Why is flow control important? It is necessary to safeguard the integrity of the solid waste system to reduce waste, control pollution, and protect and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of Thurston County. Flow control helps assure that waste generated in the county is managed responsibly and ensures a steady, sustainable stream of revenue of solid waste and the associated revenue to fulfill the county's significant obligations associated with our solid waste system. The county has responsibilities, which include maintaining efficient, reliable, and affordable solid waste operations and facilities for our residents, supply resources to monitor and maintain the closed landfill located in Hawks Prairie to comply with regulatory requirements, provide facility and infrastructure capital improvements to address the growing needs of our population in the county, align with the objectives and implement the goals of the solid waste management plan, which was developed with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And these goals and objectives include community programs and education, outreach and enforcement responsibilities, and ensure that the solid waste generated or collected in the county is handled responsibly in accordance with the values of our community. This ordinance was developed with the expertise of the team you see before you, as well as input from members of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which included a subcommittee of subject matter experts and included industry representatives. Specifically, the proposed flow control ordinance will designate the Thurston County solid waste facilities, which is the Waste and Recovery Center at Hawks Prairie and the Rain Air Rochester drop boxes, as the exclusive disposal sites for all municipal solid waste, or MSW, generated in the county, with certain exceptions. It regulates MSW commercially transported from the unincorporated areas of the county to county-owned disposal facilities. It regulates residual waste generated from recycling or reclamation facilities within the county to be transported to the designated facilities. It provides for enforcement mechanisms, including compliance inspections and penalties for violations. It also includes the following exemptions. It exempts residential self-haul customers from penalties and enforcement actions. It exempts inert waste, for example, concrete, asphalt, brick, stainless steel, collected from disposal at the county-owned disposal facilities. It allows for waste loads consisting of 90% or more by volume of construction and demolition debris to be transported outside of the designated county facilities. It allows any container of solid waste consisting of 90% or more by volume of recyclable materials to be transported outside the county-owned facilities. And it exempts source-separated recyclables collected from residents in scheduled routed curbside programs from disposal at county-owned facilities. It also provides authority for the county to exempt additional MSW materials from disposable at our facilities if unable to process, excuse me, either by source type or volume. The proposed flow control ordinance and a frequently asked questions document can be found on our Public Works website under the Documents Library, and we have received no written public comment. So with that, that concludes my remarks, Commissioners.
Just stop and give a few, Karen.
Well, here and there to Karen.
Excuse me.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
I do have, I guess it could be in a question form if I could, please. I've had construction people talk to me about this could drive up the cost of public construction projects like schools. And I wonder about the 10% or 90% that you relayed to it, Karen. Who's the enforcement on that end of things? How do we tell something is 10% versus 20%? And I think there's just, having a background in law enforcement for a lot of years, I always hate to associate myself with things that look like maybe they're unenforceable, creating legislation that's unenforceable. So I don't know if you want to get into those topics now, but I'm wondering how we're going to address that in the future. And is there a possibility for, I don't know, corruption? Garbage has always been something associated with corruption. So I wonder about, and I'm not alleging any corruption, don't get me wrong. I'm just looking into the future. How do we determine the 10%? Somebody stopping that truck along the road? Do we have a garbage police? Those are pretty broad questions, and I'm not saying we're making any decisions now, but those are just concerns of mine. So I'll let it go at that. And if you feel like answering, fine. If not, maybe we can talk about it as public comment comes in.
Go ahead, Karen.
She probably wants to stay muted.
There she is.
I wasn't sure if we did want to talk about that. I mean, so this does obviously allow for enforcement mechanisms. We are not proposing at this time that we have some sort of an official enforcement officer or something that would do that. But I do think that one of the most effective enforcement in an area can just be other people that are looking out for those types of violations, right? I mean, this is, as you mentioned, garbage is big business, and often peer-to-peer type of information or sharing can be one of the effective enforcement mechanisms. It's certainly something that we will continue to monitor and be open to other types of enforcement over time. But I mean, this provides, the ordinance puts in place the ability to look at those and adapt and incorporate other enforcement mechanisms over time. And I would welcome, Steve, if you have any experience in other jurisdictions with some of those same questions, because I know that this is not something that is unique to Thurston County.
I'm happy to jump in. Thanks, Karen, Commissioners. This is Steve DeGiulio. And enforcement and the methods for enforcement vary from county to county, depending in large part based upon the resources of the particular activity and entity. King County, as an example, has a large system that contains not only the unincorporated county, but all of the cities except for the city of Seattle. And so obviously, it has a significant waste stream and does have enforcement officers employed to monitor where waste goes. And as Karen indicated, there's also self-monitoring by the industry itself. A recent example is the solid waste contractor, demo contractor, who took waste from a demolition site outside of the county to an unauthorized disposal site. And that was examined by and was followed by the King County Inspector, who cited that driver and company for its conduct. So you do have examples like that. I know that Snohomish County and King County does have enforcement personnel involved. Most counties, even with flow control, do not have enforcement and rely upon self-policing of the authority unless someone would call the issues to their attention.
I guess, might I just do follow-up on that question? Utilizing King County as an example, I don't know if that's the best that we can do, because I know they haul, I don't know, if it's thousands of tons of sludge, sewage sludge, and deposit it either in a forest or east of the mountains on grain land. I don't know how that all works in, but is that a product that should be handled better than that? It seems like nobody wants to ever talk about sewage sludge and what happens to it, even though we all have municipal sewage systems that we have to deal with. So I don't know if it's going to tie in as part of this deal. There's a lot of money changes hands over sewage sludge. I think it ruins the environment and hard-on-water quality. Maybe that's a whole other topic, but just further conversation maybe as we move ahead on this. Thank you.
Well, it is a different topic, not the subject of this public hearing. It is a highly regulated area controlled by probably, perhaps not quite as strict as hazardous waste regulations, but the management of biosolids is a heavily regulated area. And obviously, any site for disposal of biosolids must be managed and permitted consistent with state and local regulations.
To further answer Commissioner Edwards' question about enforcement, the proposed ordinance in Section 10 has the enforcement section in it. And the Department Public Works Director is the one charged with enforcing it. And it's a civil infraction only. I'm sure you've read it, and it can escalate for multiple repeat offenses, but it's a civil only. And I like the schematic you put together as to where other counties, whether it's civil or criminal/civil, so that was helpful. Commissioner Mensah?
Yeah, I guess I just was kind of the same point. This matrix that I assume is available to the public was provided to us, and it shows that Lewis County, for example, there's criminal penalties that can be assessed. I don't know how you get there. Also, Mason and Pierce, our neighbors to the north-south and northwest, all involve criminal penalties as well as civil. And we're in, our proposal is to keep it to civil. And then the other thing that I would just notice here, because this was a comment that I'd received earlier about the recyclable exception and the construction debris and the 90%. And to the extent on this matrix that I noticed that any other county uses that kind of percentage, it's Snohomish and Spokane that also use the 90%. A lot of the counties just say recyclables, at least according to the matrix, without going more specific. But I guess that was interesting to me, and I would call the public's attention to that because the 90%, I know we had a discussion, the boards had a discussion earlier about, you know, where that number comes from and why it's the right number. But it seems like there's other, that seems to be the only number I'm seeing other jurisdictions use. So I know there was a thought process behind that. And then biosolids, that's a different, that doesn't fall within municipal solid waste, correct?
It doesn't.
Yeah, okay.
No part of this proposal.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
My question, I'm going to guess, is either for Rick Peters or for you, Karen. The last time we had a briefing on this, I'm not sure what the date was, but we were given a proposed ordinance, and the bottom says September 29, 2020. And the one we have today for this proposal today is dated 11/17/20.
They are the same. They are the same, Commissioner.
Okay, but it's the same font, but section of the new one has a section at the bottom where this section's on the second page. This is nine pages. This is eight pages. What changed?
I think it has to do with the formatting of the pages, is all. They are exactly the same ordinance.
Okay, good. I checked the first page. They seem to be. But I didn't want to be missing something. Okay.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I did want to, Commissioner Edwards, I know you started out with the question about the costs of the potential school cost increases. I just want to reemphasize something that we pointed out here, that this ordinance does allow for some exemptions based on processing by source type or volume. So we do have flexibility. That's one of the unique things about our ordinance. It does provide flexibility for us to evaluate circumstances or, you know, the ability to take something in at the disposal facilities and exempt those. So that does provide flexibility to address some of those potential consequences that you are brought up.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, Romero, anything? Okay, I'm going to open this up for public testimony now. And the only one that's in the boardroom that has signed up is John Pettit. Please welcome to the stage yourself your address, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's kind of a garbage topic, but we got to deal with it. So my particular concerns, when I was reading through this document, had to do more with, and I was glad to hear some of the information that's related in the, somehow I didn't pick it up, has to do with the ability for people to be able to, that farmer out there in the middle of far end of Rochester, that he has a friend that'll load up his flatbed and haul down to Chehalis or Centrey or something. It seems like the county is wanting to make this a profitable venture by forcing people to utilize our services here. And I really think that from the public standpoint, the real concept is, we as taxpayers, property owners, we want to have certain services, but we don't want to be necessarily controlled highly by who we have to pay all of our services to. Now, that being said, we, in theory, would not be able to take any of our waste, you know, commercially, and I think the commercially is an important part here, to another location. Does other counties have the ability to bring their waste here? I mean, I know, you know, you can, and I won't get into off-topic, but you can vote without ID, but you can't empty your garbage without ID, okay? So is there limitations in this county to forbid people from outer county from disposing within our system, which would cost us more money? Or it would increase our income, if that's what this is about, is the cost of transferring it into the train systems and going away? We're not really keeping any of our garbage here. So everything we do is some form of cost, and the more that we handle, the more facilities we have to have. So my concern is, one is, is liberty of free choice by the public for getting services done? Some of that was addressed, and I appreciate contractor issues and other things, but there's a rather wide spectrum there. I don't think we need more police, garbage police out there. If there's waste or other things, then from an environmental standpoint, yeah, we go after them. But I'm not really worried about chasing after a few dollars because somebody's taking their garbage out of the county. But I also want to note, do we let other counties deposit their garbage here? So that's it.
Thank you for everybody on Zoom.
Yes, I believe, I don't know, I have Mr. Steve Gilmore on Zoom. Steve, we'd like to provide public testimony this afternoon. If you do, please unmute yourself. You have, introduce yourself, where you reside in the county, or what you represent, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Steve Gilmore. I am a municipal relationship manager with Republic Services, who is currently the county's contractor for long-haul waste and disposal as well as operating the transfer station. This has actually been a very good process by county staff to identify and fix a significant problem that exists currently with the current contracts at the transfer station. The current contracts currently at the station do provide flow control. However, there is no protection once those contracts expire to make sure that that waste continues to go to your transfer station. So we were involved with Mason County's process, and once they passed flow control, their volumes increased 10%. There is a lot of waste that is leaving potentially Thurston County, potentially up to 20,000 tons a year that's leaving the county, which in turn is really negatively impacting your total waste system. So if you think about the amount of capital projects that staff has identified that needs to happen at the transfer station, it is vital to make sure that you have that volume coming into the facility to make sure that ratepayers are not going to be artificially, have artificially higher rates because they're basically making up for this lost volume that's leaving the community. If I remember, I think there's millions of dollars in new projects that need to happen at the transfer station. So this is really vital for the long-term economic sustainability for the system. And thank you, staff, for great job on this effort. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We don't have anybody else on Zoom? No, let me check that.
We're coming to the phone. Thank you.
For those members of the public who have joined us this afternoon via conference call, if you would like to provide public testimony related to the solid waste flow control ordinance in this public hearing, please unmute yourself, introduce yourself, send in your name, where you reside in the county. You have three minutes.
None, sir.
Okay, that surprises me. I'm going to jump in real quick and ask two questions, and I'll turn it over to my seatmates. Can Thurston County solid waste yard work handle the capacity that might be expected? Or do we expect an increase?
Based on the information that we have regarding tonnage, based on Department of Ecology data, we should be able to, yes, the answer is yes, we should be able to handle the capacity. Again, if for some reason we found that there was something that was unexpected, we would have the ability in this flow control ordinance to exempt certain types of waste if it became an issue in terms of handling capacity.
Good, thank you. And my question is, looking at Lewis County, there is criminal/civil. But if I took a bunch of waste to Lewis County, I could be fined in Thurston, but can Lewis County, do they have the authority to cite me down there for bringing unauthorized waste into their county?
I'm going to look to either Steve or Rick maybe to help me with this, because I don't know anything, I don't know about Lewis County's flow control ordinance and what is...
How about if somebody from Lewis or Mason comes into Lewis with unauthorized... Yeah, if some other county comes into Thurston with unauthorized rubbish or waste, is that, we can cite them? Is that a violation?
Why don't I take a shot at this? First of all, it would be unlikely that somebody would bring waste to Thurston County. Certainly possible, and if their ID or the source is not checked, then it could be disposed at the transfer station or one of the outlying stations at whatever cost the county happens to be charging. Right now, the county has on its books an ordinance that prohibits waste from being imported into the county. We traditionally counsel against such restrictions, but we know that they exist. Thurston County's had that on its books for many years. But in answer to the question, yes, if somebody was found to be improperly bringing waste into Thurston County, they could be subject to violation of that provision of the county code. With respect to Lewis County, Lewis County has flow control. If somebody is found to be violating that ordinance by taking waste outside of the county for processing, they would be subject to Lewis County's regulations and enforcement actions. So those are, you know, the standards that most counties employ. Only a handful of counties, Pierce being an example, prohibits waste from outside the county from being disposed of in the county. Many counties, Cowlets, Clickitat, that have landfill sites, welcome waste from outside of the county.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Mensah?
You covered it. I'm good.
Oh, Mr. Edwards?
Maybe just one follow-up. I would suspect that it would be less likely that someone would come here from Lewis County, because I think the rates are cheaper in Lewis County than they are here. But what about from Pierce County, where the rates are quite a bit more, I think, than they are proposed here in Thurston County or what the rates are running here in Thurston County? So is there something there that prevents that? Or any prohibition built into this that would prevent that activity?
Well, again, Pierce County would prohibit it, and Thurston County currently prohibits it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So public comment is closed, and no further discussion. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
And move, seconded to close this public hearing. Any discussion on that? Romero, please.
Yeah, we don't have a motion for you to consider a proven disordinance, obviously. What I will do, I will probably bring this item for next Tuesday morning to continue the conversation. And at that point, I will ask the board as to how they would proceed.
Okay. So we have a motion to close the public hearing. It's been seconded. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you all.
You see.